Whole plan isn't.
Come on, you know, focus its attention and looked at projects that it could actually build that would enhance and benefit. Uh, the White River and the communities uh about, you know, within. In the White River in Rio Blanco County, um, the Yellow Jacket District. Provide service to about half of the county, whereas there's the Rio Blanco Water Conservancy District that's then to the uh west. Uh, Yellow Jacket came upon this idea of, uh, it used to have a large portfolio of water rights, you know, these big massive um reservoirs. Uh, that, you know, were round forever, but in reality probably never would have been constructed if it could not have. But so about fifty years ago, um, we got involved, the district then decided you should. And pare down its portfolio and look at more viable and reasonable projects, especially with the cost of constructions of such large reservoirs, all of the permitting issues. What could really be used and provide a benefit uh to the district and a major component of that is this concept of an augmentation plan and augmentation water. Uh, that would help uh, uh, you know, help times of a call up until a couple of years ago, that call had never existed. Uh, and now, as you pointed out, Commissioner Oden, um, it is, it is part of our life today as this call exists. Um, and will be, and it will significantly impact the ability of uh property owners to develop new water. Uh, and uh, to drill new wells or to do any sort of new projects that aren't already covered by existing water rights. Uh. So with that in mind, the Yellow Jacket Board went down the step of looking at a feasible project, one that is potential and. Biggest, most cost effective uh option is to, you know, enlarge an existing reservoir. So the Yellow Jack District uh has moved water rights that they own and changed water rights uh to allow them to be stored at Lake Avery. Uh, they have uh now, and most recently looked at a process with CPW, Colorado Parks and Wildlife. Um, for the enlargement of Lake Avery. And in that, uh, the, the Yellow Jacket District recently received a bid from an engineering firm uh to. Do the initial feasibility analysis of enlarging Lake Avery. And this would be uh, in, in our view or in the board, the Yellow Jacket view, one of the most uh. You know, cost effective way to, to create actual water for people uh and an augmentation source that's. Located upper high in the basin that would then have a benefit to. Uh, all water users between here and, and we call him water right, which is down by uh dealer draw. All down by Ranger. Uh, so that's where the project kind of sits right now is we're in the process of looking for funding sources to help. Pay for this engineering analysis, uh, the current estimate uh is about two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, on the feasibility study, uh, the Yellow Jacket District, uh, we have, yeah, so we have some funding um. Obstacles in that, the Yellow Jacket uh District does not have a significant funding supply, its budget is fairly tight. Uh, uh, there are a number of issues related to that, so that's kind of where we are right now and appreciate the opportunity to talk. I know there's a lot of members of the board here, I think you probably know most folks in the room. CPW, the Division of Water Resources is also here, so. Good opportunity for a conversation. Happy to answer questions about the Yellow Jacket, what its project looks like, or. How we want to proceed.
Well. This is a, this is a work session, so we, we're not going to make any decisions here. Um, but we, we can talk about this stuff, but my, I guess. My reaction to that would be, we want to plan past the study, we don't want to. Put money into this and then have it stop. So we want to start the, the process now, so that if we get this plan going and it's approved, that we've got an endgame.
And I think um, you know, there's a number of uh ways that this goes out. Uh, you, if the reservoir can be enlarged by two feet, it can be enlarged by ten feet, you know, we just don't really know what happens. Then the next step, of course, is, is the construction phase, uh, and um, you know, whatever that looks like. I think there's uh certainly, you know, uh. Yeah, I, I don't, I, you know, we have to know stage, stage one, what the results are before we can really sort of think about what the next. Uh, processes, but I think, you know, both governments, you know, the. Uh, the Yellow Jacket as well as Rio Blanco County see this as a, as a concern. As that mission started to help uh the constituents.
Doug, I think that we would love to tell you that we're going to do this project, but I think there's a lot of unknowns right now, I think that what is funding. Who is, is getting to that, that point to where it's actually to open, I don't know that. We have that foresight, right? We're, we're coming through the steps, and I think that the study is going to be a big portion.
Yeah.
I think if it's even feasible or doable.
I, I agree with that. But uh. Don't you think that having a coalition or a. A group to support you and, and. Help with this study and, and uh, a vision would help that.
Sure, I think that would be probably valuable, I don't know at this point. I mean, we, we still need to get the study done, but even though there's going to be a project. I think, I think there is value.
Yeah, I, I, you know, in the extent possible, it. This project, we've been trying to raise awareness for, you know, within the county, uh, local communities, Basin Roundtable. I think John Waldorf on the boards are Basin Roundtable representative and promoting the project there. Uh, state, so if there's, you know, trying to build a coalition certainly is important, you know, like to do that. Uh. You know, to the extent possible, you know, it, it's an interesting thing when you start talking about water rights and. Who, who needs the water, you know, and, and the people, and I think somewhat the reality is, you know, county is the people who need the augmentation water are. County residents, not municipal residents, municipalities are largely. You know, affected with their legal supplies, sure not, they may, you know, if the river goes down, uh, physical supply problem. But that, that impacts everything.
I guess a couple of things, Doug, that I'm, I'm sitting here thinking, um. I want to make sure there are be understandings, I mean, this isn't in place of. Any effort in the lower part of the base of the White River, this is in addition to. Um, the other thing that I think that we have to recognize. So, yes, this is on, it's involving state land. And so, and so we think that there's not a federal nexus to it, so there wouldn't be NEPA. I don't think that it'll ever get built without some federal funds somewhere, somehow. The minute you pull federal funds into it for construction, you gotta do NEPA, and you may have to anyway, I don't know how the state, I mean. We know that, well, we won't go there, never mind, um. So, I just think that we have to acknowledge, but we have to get started, I mean, I think that's where we're at here, is we have to get started, we've been. I've been in this county over fifteen years now, and there's been a lot of talk. And we've got to get started, so that's, that's where I'm at, knowing that it could be fifteen years, but if you don't start today. You're going to be a lot longer down the road than that, so, um. Now, is the study you're talking about that's been done, that's the one that was done in February, right? I mean, I'm not, have I missed something?
Right, so there, there's not a study that has been, a feasibility study that has been done. Uh, the, we just got a, in February received a proposal.
Okay, so that's the proposal for it, is what it was.
Due to the feasibility study.
Okay.
Uh, and it's a two-year project, I, uh, I think it's been provided to you, I have some handouts.
And, and I was at that meeting, I just wanted to make sure if there's something happened since I was at that last, well, a meeting, I don't know what's left.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it's, now it's that process of trying. How best to do that, uh.
How much money was that?
Uh, the, the proposal is around two hundred thousand dollars. A two-year study, um. And depending upon, uh, you know, their findings, it may be less, I, you know.
And so you were asking them to do feasibility of. Give me a little more detail, are we talking for X number, what, or, you know, acre feet and others, what are we asking them to do?
The, the study itself, uh, as the request went out, um. The Yellow Jacket District has about ten thousand acre feet of wat- paper water that it, it has the ability to store like. Uh, there's been some initial analysis of, well, we could just do some changes to the spillway, huh? That could then, you could raise, change the spillway and raise the lake level a foot, two feet. What would that cost and what would that look like and could the dam handle that much additional water? Uh, then there's other concepts of increasing the dam height even greater. Uh, and what does that look like and how do we, uh? If you raised it by eight feet, ten feet, how much more water could you get? And what would be the, uh? What would that look like from a engineering stand? Maximize the amount of water that you could store uh over and above what's already there, and that's, uh. That's what the feasibility analysis will look at, say, if you can't, you can't raise the dam height by twenty feet because that's just too. Uh, you could without significant. Dam improvements or whatever, or causing other issues.
They don't know if the geology will handle it.
Exactly, exactly. Uh, but you could just raise the spillway, you know, uh, three feet and gain two thousand acre feet of water. Uh, so, so those are the, the things that they would be looking at, uh, so that then there's an opportunity to make a decision about what makes most sense.
Vicki, did you have something you needed to comment on?
Um, I was just going to ask, uh, I guess from my perspective, um. Um. I guess my concern would be, or a, a question that I would have is. What commitment is Yellow Jacket willing to provide the county, the citizens of Rio Blanco, in order for the county to help? Fund this feasibility study, what, I mean, I guess make a case for. Why would we use county resources like our, for instance, our CCI TF funding? For this feasibility study, because I think that goes back to the commissioner's comments of if we fund that, how do we make sure that it's not just something that gets done and. Set on the shelf, I guess, can you answer that, or?
Um. I, I. Can't say that, I mean, you can fund a study and that it, it won't sit on the shelf, I mean, I sure, I can't really say that there's a lot of pieces that have to. The stars have to align, um, but, you know, this is a project that certainly has a, a benefit to the entire county. Uh, it, uh, you know, it secures future water development for the county and future growth within the county. Uh, there is uh an important aspect of this too, that I don't, we haven't really talked about, but. Part of the water rights that Yellow Jacket has changed allowed them to be used for in-stream flow purposes, so for. Release with the uh, uh, Colorado Water Conservation Board. Uh, so if that water is stored in the reservoir, then during times of drought, water can be released for the fishery and which, you know. The White River is really the lifeblood of this county, this community. Uh, and to the extent that that, that river is, you know, goes dry, you don't have the fishermen, you don't have the tourism, you don't have, uh. You know, the agriculture, you know, everything kind of stems from that river, so that you ask, the ideas of being able to have more water in storage to service. That property, you just, the entire county just benefits everybody. Uh, and creates a. Yeah, this creates greater opportunity that if, if the water's not there and it's not stored, uh, and the river goes dry. And counties, a lot of, has some significant problems.
Which is exactly my line of thinking, is that we need to do that, and my. Suggestion is to get this group together to help Yellow Jacket get this going and keep it going. That's kind of where I'm.
And it, yeah, I, I don't, I think it would be great to have, um. Yeah, great to have additional partners, uh, the need is, is, is now though, too, uh, so. It would be great to move things, you know, if we could move things faster, that would be great, but, I mean, our group is not, I'm not saying. So, developing coalitions for the long term, I think is certainly an important aspect in getting people involved. If there is a, a project uh to expand the reservoir, to, to create additional storage uh in the upper part of the basin, you know. I'm sure we'll find plenty of supporters in this community to help that out, then figure out a solution.
So, I guess, so thanks for mentioning the in-stream flow, what, what are the? Uses of the Yellow Jacket's water right, what all is involved in that?
Uh, the water right, um, is authorized for leave. Pretty much everything, augmentation, uh, in-stream flow for fish purposes, agricultural uses, uh. Added my folder, but I think there's municipal components, I do it as well, so it could be used for, you know.
So, I guess the first thing that come to my mind, let's say you're only able to store two thousand feet. Okay, so we decide that we can do that. Then who's going to decide what that's released for, I mean, so my understanding and those in the audience that may need to correct me. Is that. Besides agriculture, you're right, the town pretty much, I think, has their ducks in a row with their water, right? We know there's always going to be a need for agriculture, two thousand feet are not going to do a whole lot for agriculture, so we need to be realistic with that. Um, I mean, every little bit helps, so don't get me wrong, um, but augment, given the fact that we are now over-appropriated. It's my understanding, you two in the back correct me, that. For new houses. That the, without augmentation water, you can build a house, get a well permit. But only if your water, you're um, using water inside, I've been told even you can't do an outside spigot. But it still allows you to build a house, so it does not stop our water, um, our building per se, but yes, Betty.
I can add to that. If a new subdivision happened after May first, when we went over appropriated. The well, it would have argument, not in household, maybe just period and on.
A subdivision.
Prior to May first, you still can, after May first, you cannot.
So how about a house on, so definition of subdivision? Less than thirty-five acres?
Thirty-five acres. And a subdivision is a division of land, so if you have an eighty acre piece, you split off five acres, they're looking at that entire eighty. So there's a lot of planning and thought process that has to go into this, because it would really hurt people on the water, so.
Right, so, I, I mean, I think that that's where our reality is, um, is. Now, let me ask you this question, what's it going to do for those above Lake Avery?
What, yeah, if, I'm sorry, what goes above Lake Avery and.
If, if somebody that needs to build a house above Lake Avery, um, is there a way to utilize this as augmentation water?
Well, we don't, we obviously, there's no augmentation plan in place, but what I would envision is that we cannot exchange upstream of the conflict of. An exchange, and an exchange means that we can not send wet, wet water up the river, obviously, but we can allow patients to occur within that region of that conflict. Without injuring other water users. But there's a water user in that range, and that's, um. All that water, especially water, so typically we double exchange up into the in-stream flow. So, as far as in augmentation plan and what I've been fishing, it's mainly like, is it.
Um.
We would, I think we'd, you know, there'd be some engineering analysis that would have to look at that, uh, evaluate, sort of. Decide when, I mean, there may be times when an exchange could operate if the CWCP's in-stream flow is not deficit. And I, I just don't know the hydraulics anymore, but those are things that we'd have to look at.
But we, you know, we can get into a lot of that stuff, but that's, that's after we figure out. Whether we can do this thing.
Yeah.
And what I am after today is a commitment. That if we do this thing, that we can put. A group together to work on this augmentation plan. That's what I'm after, is I want a commitment to, from Yellow Jacket, that if we help with this, that we'll get something in return.
And I think as long as I've been on the board, there, we're excited now with the board, there ever was, we actually might have a viable project. We're, we're not wanting to set it on the shelf, we're wanting to do a project. I think we're, we're excited about this, so it's, as a, as for the board, I think we're, we're on board.
And as the board's attorney, this is a work session, not making decisions.
Well, and so I guess I, I haven't heard the question that you want money. I haven't personally heard that question, you need money. So I would just add to that, have you applied to the River District, have you applied to the Basin Roundtable and looked at other grants?
So here's the difficult situation that the Yellow Jackets District is in, is that it has a very small budget. And it has a budget, you know, collects roughly. I think twenty-seven thousand dollars or something annually. Uh, from, you know, its revenue sources. If it receives. You know, more than anything, by, you know, five thousand dollars, it has tabor problems. Uh, and so the issue is that it, it, it's a difficult situation to go out and ask for money without having a partner. Um, so I think, you know, today, the ask is. Is how will Rio Blanco County, you know, assist financially with the, uh, revenue, the study? Uh, you know, in some capacity, pay for all of it, that would be wonderful, that makes it a lot easier. Uh, pay for part of it, then we have to go out and, you know, find some other resources, uh. But if there's other grant money that needs to be found, then the Yellow Jacket District's in need of a, of a big brother to hold the funds. Because it can't absorb those funds without violating tabor and having other problems. Yeah, so there would need to be some sort of fiscal agent at agreement with Rio Blanco County, um, possibly. Uh, Yellow Jacket did do a similar project with, uh. When it had this larger portfolio of water rights, started down the path of a reservoir feasibility study, went to the Basin Roundtable and. You know, received a grant that, uh, the Colorado River District helped, uh, and acted as the fiscal agent for it at that time. Uh, so. That would be another opportunity to do that, uh, I don't know if they have, it'd be, it's just another, you just haven't. I think we're the Yellow Jacket Board, or maybe it's just me, wanted to have this conversation with the county, because I think it makes most sense, talk to the county first.
And, and I appreciate that, so another question is. Have you, what do you think the possibility of being able to de-tabor is? Why could you not go to the vote of the people, because you don't have a huge number of voters to de-tabor? That would allow you to hold that money.
Um, it hasn't been. The desire of the board to do that. Like.
I mean. Okay.
Seems to me that, that that would be a necessary step, though, if Yellow Jacket is going to grow with this water, any meaningful way, if they're going to sit for. You know, augmentation purposes to sell it, and that, you're going to have revenues that are going, and they are, and they're going to need to be. You know, in order to speak thin, you're going to need, so you're going to need to de-bruce at some point.
And I don't see. Or a grand enterprise, except for.
And that's exactly what I am pointing toward, you said, you said.
Yeah. I think, right, there's still limitations on the enterprise aspect of things, and how much you could grow, and so if we were to, you know, a two-hundred thousand dollar grant. Into an enterprise, that still doesn't work.
Or the number seven of what your enterprise fund is.
Right. So at, at this point, you know, it's just, it's difficult.
Well, yeah, but if, if, if down the road, we can get this coalition enterprise, whatever you want to call it. Put together, then they can, uh. Find money, different places, maybe from the public, maybe from different places, but it's, it gives you more. Flexibility and options, and it, it, it's true, I guess. You're up line, it just helps Yellow Jacket move forward. Holds you along.
Yeah, if there isn't any interest to go de-bruce, sorry, I said, I should, I should have said de-bruce instead of de-tabor, so thank you, um. You know, if there isn't any interest in doing that, then you are stuck, there's no question. Um, you know, if there isn't any interest in doing that, then you are stuck. There's no question about it, but I guess I would hope that you might consider that. Um.
Well, Kelly, that's what I'm, that's, if they're not interested in doing, that's this group that I'm talking about would take that on.
And, and we just have to explore the options and what that really, I mean, and so I'm not disagreeing. I'm just saying, um. Yeah, there's all those you, even if it's an enterprise button, you can't go there. So, so what it might look like um and how we proceed with that.
Um, to be.
Makes some sense.
Yeah, I agree that these are all great topics, um, and important things for the district to think about. But I think the real the fundamental question that it's facing is, does it have a project? And that we don't know. And if there is no project, there may not be a need for Yellow Jacket District, because there may not be a need for other stuff, and there has to, it has to come from another source.
Okay, but from the, from Rio Blanco County, the people that I represent, if we put this money into this and you guys, we get this done and it goes a different direction, we want some, we want to, we want to be in control of the money that we're giving it.
Of course.
Because that would be, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, I think my, well, Paul, I'm saying is that, you know, if there's, this enlargement to Lake Avery is not a feasible project, which that's what the engineering rooms build reservoirs and dams. If we can't enlarge it, then I don't know. You, this, this board has looked at numerous other options, projects, and ways in which to create things within the upper basin. And due to the geology, due to the land ownership, uh, it's very, there are very few places which something could be constructed. Uh, and uh provide any benefit other than this existing structure. And and so if, if this project you know, can't be constructed, then the idea of additional storage capacity in the upper basin not really there, and you have to think of other alternatives.
I agree with you, but you know, it's kind of the chicken or the egg thing. Um, I'm just going to put it bluntly. If, if somehow we got the money and, and could get this going, would you be willing to uh commit?
I have to defer to the board.
And yet to, you know, if there is no project, then there's no commitment. But if there is a project, we want to commit.
I think Doug, this is the first step. I think the, the study is the first step. That's what we're hung up on. I mean, I think me personally, speaking of the taxpayers, that say you, you need to be responsible for the money that you give out. To me, if you look at this project, a water storage project at Lake Avery is beneficial, yeah? I don't see, I don't see anything say that it's not as a taxpayer.
No, I agree with you a hundred percent on that part of it, but if we, if we uh do this study and then Yellow Jacket decides to go a different way or do something different, that's what I'm looking for. I want to commit to the Yellow Jacket, we're going to, we're going to stick with this and. And if you, and if you agree with that, then we sh- we shouldn't have a problem making a commitment.
Personally, I agree with that. I, 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 I'm good with that. Yeah.
So I think there's a couple of things that come to my mind. So what I'm hearing you say, Doug, is we've got to have a plan, a long-term plan laid out here and how we're going to get there. And that means is Yellow Jacket going to de-brews? Because that, if they are, if they are not going to de-brews, and if we move, there's, okay, there's one more piece that even before we get there. Liability. If nobody's willing to take the liability on of that dam, then there is no project. So there's no sense in doing a study. So we've got to figure out who will take the liability on of that dam. And then we have to move forward with the study. But I'm thinking, if I'm hearing you right, Doug, before the county commits money to this, we need to see a long-term plan of not only, yeah, we will build a dam, but who's going to be the fiscal agent? Who's going to be the partners? Have you got commitments from those partners? All of that stuff. So I mean, I'm headed down the same road, I think that you are, but it needs to be in writing.
No, I, I agree with that, but that, that, that doesn't necessarily mean that they have to de-brews. That means that.
Exactly. There may be another option.
That's right.
But we've got to have a written plan.
Narrow these things down and say, you got to do this and this. I, I want my vision is to have this group put together that would help Yellow Jacket move it along. And this group can figure out where to get money and where to uh, this thing is going. I, I want, I want to pull them along and get this thing going. I, I think time is of the essence and I want to get it moving.
I think the other partner in this is CPW.
Right.
They have Jonathan, I, I'm, we're missing Bailey today, so.
Jonathan and Benjamin is, Benjamin Kraus is on the line and he's the water guy with uh CPW.
He had a hand up earlier or something, I think.
Oh, he did? I didn't see it. Benjamin or, or Jonathan, can you hear us?
Yeah, I'm here. Um, and I did raise my hand earlier. Just wanted to comment on the, the whole wells. Um, and you know, the exempt, non-exempt, but uh the DWR people there did a spectacular job of saying what I was going to.
Okay, thank you.
So have you guys had the conversation? Because right now CPW has the liability on this dam. So if there is growth to the dam, is CPW willing to work with Yellow Jacket and others to make sure that that's covered?
Um, to my knowledge, we've not yet had that conversation. Um, similar to, you know, kind of the direction this meeting is going. Uh, it's, it's all kind of hanging up on that feasibility study. Um, because you know, i- if it comes back that it's just not a feasible site, um, then we'd be doing an awful lot of legwork for naught. Um, so um, rather than having those conversations, I guess upfront, uh, we've generally just been waiting to see whether this site is feasible and then we'll continue to have those conversations. Um, you know, that was part of the agreement to pursue the feasibility study is that we would be open to having a conversation um to define, you know, liabilities, responsibilities, roles, um, you know, because if, if an augmentation plan gets set up here, somebody's going to have to actually physically operate it and make releases from the reservoir. Um, and CPW, we just don't have the manpower at the time to accomplish that.
Kelly, that's, that's what I'm trying to keep during this, going down all these rabbit holes. Because we can, we can, you know, this, if this, if that, the first thing we need to do is get the study done. I want a commitment from Yellow Jacket that they will buy into getting this, keeping it going. If we find to get this thing done, if we get it done and it's and it's uh feasible, and I want this group to, to be able to help control what happens and, and control where the money comes from and, and, and guide where this goes.
Yeah, I, I think we're going to have to. There's no question. I get, I guess I would just still have the question. Again, it's the chicken or the egg. But I think, I think we need to get this group together before the county commits.
I don't know. I'm going to defer to legal and stuff, but it seems to me like if we put this group together, the county would fund this group and then the group would take it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I think that was kind of what I was thinking is the, the seed money, you know, the county could do seed money to the, to that group and maybe there's matching funds, you know, uh, so everybody that has skin in the game would have skin in the game. Uh, in it, in order to try to fund them. And then I agree, and I actually had one Scott saying on week and, and uh Benjamin, that, yeah, the feasibility study is important. Without it, if it's not feasible, then it's not feasible and it goes away. But if we're, if we're going to fund the feasibility study as, as the county, then, you know, where do we go from there? Once, once the plan, if it becomes that feasible, what's Yellow Jacket's uh uh position uh as to how that water will be used and it'll be able to be stored there, which I'm, I know it's going to be down the road. And the, the project itself is, it's probably going to be a multi-million dollar project. I can't imagine a enlargement project on Avery that's going to be less than, you know, millions.
Yeah, five, less than five million, it's not possible.
Yeah. So, so that's, you know, there's going to be a lot of, of requests for funding down the road on that.
And that's, and that's where I'm going. I think that if you have this group put together that is as representative from different facets, they're going to have a lot more pull or, or be able to get to the public and figure out than one Yellow Jacket or that, that, and the county is not going to take this on by itself. It's, it's just, it's the liability. We can't do it. But if we.
What would your timeline be on forming a group? I mean, how long is that going to take? You know, if you funnel money through that group and then back to Yellow Jacket, what what is that time?
I don't have an answer for that, but I would push it pretty fast.
I, I think we can form the group fairly quick in order to do that. Yeah, I mean, it's just a matter of deciding what, how we want it to look. And, and you know, developing it either through a um, you know, organizational with the Secretary of State or, or in the association of what we, however we want it to look. Um, so I don't see that as being a big problem. I don't think that if, if it's going to be funded through a group, Yellow Jacket still has the taper issue and things like that. So we can't go back to. So.
Right.
It has independently um uh uh do that. It has developed the funding mechanisms, uh, wherever it will be. Uh, has to pay for the study and the penalty of Yellow Jacket, all of that, because if you guys have a, a twenty seven thousand dollar annual budget, you're not going to be able to absorb much taper growth without de-brews. I mean, that's just the, the, the nature of things. If you're going to, if you're going to grow, you're going to, I mean, there's not a lot of, uh, so you know, how is it, you know, once we get uh the project done, and, and I mean, this is way down the road, but I think that's things that people want to look at is when we get the project done, how's that going to look? Who's going to control it? Who's going to operate it? How is that water going to go to benefit Yellow Jacket? It's the primary purpose here. But as well as uh not only the, the district, but the county at large. And, you know, there, there's, there's a lot of models that we've seen on augmentation associations. I've looked at that part, uh, I'm sure other places as well down in the San Luis Valley or. There as well. So we've got some models of what that organization could look like.
So when you first step in V two grant and MOU um that said.
But before we, before we go down that road, and I haven't said a whole lot because I'm watching the room and I'm, and I'm, I'm not a water person. So I'm feeling a lot of hesitation from the board. That's the feeling I'm getting on doing this group. I want to hear from the board. Where is that hesitation of forming this group that Doug is presenting? That's I need to be convinced that that is the direction that you guys as your board and I need to respect. Where is that hesitation? If you have any hesitation, I, that's just what I'm reading in the room right now. That's what I've been trained to do and that's what I'm reading. So I would like to hear from the board as far as, you know, individually where your hesitation is on forming this group.
And you might have got that under you, but I don't, I don't really have any hesitation. I think one more thing that I have to do before we do, at least I'm more kind of excited about going ahead with the project, but I don't have any hesitation on a group. I think it's probably a great thing. Oh, but it is one more step.
I think it's one more commitment. You know, what is, when we say group, I mean, for me, it's like defining the group, I guess. I mean, it's a great idea, but it's, it's a good idea. It's then it's just putting into place and you know, more, more time and more meetings, I guess.
It brought meaning, but.
Well. Okay. But no, I, I mean, I look, Kelly, I mean, ever since I've been on this board, it's like, man, are we, are we ever going to be able to get something done? And we've been cracking our brains trying to get this something going and we all know how important water is and how important water is in the West and how things are a little more arid than they used to be. And I mean, I think this is a win-win and I think this is a good thing for our county and the upper reaches of our county. Yeah, there's a lot of things you can look at. I mean, we, we, you know, just talking about ag or, or municipality part, but, but look at the, uh, look, look how, uh, isn't it's not something that I, I love seeing just because it's my personal. I like seeing all that extra traffic going up the road. It's kind of a pain for me, but then again, a lot of people use Lake Avery and it's cool. So. So it's pretty nice place to go to. A lot of people camp out there. Only another thing too, it's a little budget, including the group aspect of it. We really haven't talked about that much yet because we've been so limited on our funds. You know, you guys are talking about de-brews and the wealth. We'll de-brew, we can get it de-brewed. No problem. How to get it done? There's a lot of money involved in this. We can't pay for it and you guys can't pay for it. I don't know who can pay for it. But if we lose it, it's all and weren't you a time in our life, you, we got to do something to forget about it. And uh, this what the, the use of the beneficial water to the upper end of this basin. You, you know, if we lose that, if it goes downstream, it may, it may benefit some down there or whatever. The upper end of this valley goes dry, not into the valley goes dry. There's among two ways, other ways of looking at it. Once it goes dry up here, you're done down there. So a lot of things to think about. And as far as putting this group together, you know, it, it's a good idea, but put these people in this group, you're going to have to have some people that know something about water and the benefits of the water, what we're going to use it for. So it's easy to talk about a group. You got to have the right group. And I, I don't know who that's going to be up to. Those are things to think about.
You, you would have, Yellow Jacket would have a, a lot to say about that for sure, but I guess my envision of this is this is a lot more than Yellow Jacket. This is a lot more than, than this board. It's the whole county. So we need to have a representative from different aspects of the county controlling this. And you're right, they need to know what's going on, but I think that those people are out there and, and and could.
Well, I do too. One of the things that that I'm looking at right now, the advantage we have now, we've cut the water, we've got the thought process going. This beats the heck out of over there on the other side of the hill. This down in the San Luis Valley. The city of Colorado Springs talking about taking the livelihood of agriculture out of the San Luis Valley. If that happens, that's going to be a major deal. Because there's awful first nine San Luis Valley that aren't going to be fed. There's a lot of problems, but population is going to drive that decision. But we're ahead of that ball, the eight ball there. Because we're still pretty much getting along in this county. But it's a time that we are, we need to try to do something, in my opinion.
I don't think there's a hesitation from my standpoint as far as uh I, when I hear feasibility study, I'm thinking it was two hundred grand, where's that going to go? But I think that's what we have to do, obviously, in order to make this thing happen. And logistically, I think that's what has to happen in order for the next step. I guess if we cut, we spend the two hundred grand and it comes up with this can't work, I guess that's where we're stuck. I don't know what we do with the next step. This is, I mean, I've been on the board for about five years and this is the, the most, the biggest step we've taken. For like Walt Proctor was on this board for a long time. That guy is full of information, but this is what he all the things we explored, this is what we came up and that it's hopefully doable, but I think it's so important. It's going to benefit everybody. And we have this, we have this water to use in this county. It's, it's the livelihood of the city, the livelihood of this place. So I think we're going to go somewhere. I think this is where we start with it. That would be my say.
So I could go on and on and on. Sometimes I do, but the, uh, the egg before the chicken thing. Uh, it's just a little food for thought. Uh, Applegate, the engineering firm that, that does a lot of the work for us. This is going back six or eight years ago. They already, we were already looking at overappropriation that we, you know, for those of us in the water world, it was kind of imminent. So Applegate estimated at the time they did one of their studies for us, that four hundred existing wells within our district would be affected by overappropriation. So a lot of wells, and I know Aaron's been, been beaten on this, but a lot of wells that have just as simply an in-house domestic use have been watering their yards, feeding their cows, using that water outside of the house. Overappropriation wasn't into that. So we knew at the time that up to four hundred wells, existing wells would be affected by overappropriation. I was just visiting with Lisa Brown from Wilson Water yesterday. She, her group is helping Moffett County develop an augmentation plan. So augmentation plans are super important. We're one of the few, uh, districts in, in the state that doesn't have augmentation water. So that's huge. The lifestyle that we lead in the valley, people want to water their garden. They want to have a horse. They want to have some acreage. And having water available for that purpose is essential to our way of life. So the four hundred existing wells would be affected or are going to be affected. That doesn't account for the future needs that we have, that we need to consider.
I think we, I think we all know that. And we all know that this augmentation plan is needed. There's no argument there. That's where we're headed.
All right. Well, that's one of the egg before the chicken kind of thing. Because we know in the, in the feasibility study, what we have is I think maybe four models of enlargements on the reservoir. So yeah, we, we look at those with, you know, we're kind of eager about that. We all want to see more water than less water saved in, in Lake Avery. Uh, what other benefits? What other reasons why Lake Avery is a good choice? Well, you have, uh, the, the recreational component.
You're, you're going down, you're going down rabbit holes here that we don't need to go down. We, we know all of that stuff. We're trying to figure out how to get funding for this thing and move forward.
Okay, okay. Uh, well, I think I was trying to answer the egg before the chicken. And, and I think that's important that y'all know that there is already a kind of a quantified need for that water. And one other point, I don't want to be the dead dog, but where is the greatest shortfall of, of stream flow on the entire hundred and eighty miles of the White River? Between here and, and the three big ditches upriver. In nineteen or, uh, two thousand eighteen, the river was down to seventeen and a half CFS in that reach. So we see augmentation, we see stream flow, we see recreation. There's a lot of reasons why Lake Avery is really an ideal opportunity, provided the feasibility study.
Sorry. And nobody's arguing that. Everybody agrees with you on all of that stuff. What we're trying to figure out is how we can do this. Um, I'm just going to throw something out there again, because I'm just sitting here thinking. Why, why do we have to have this group put together before the plan? Why can't we, we have a commitment that if the plan comes out positive, that we put this group together?
I think that makes sense.
I just think before you put county money to it, there needs to be a long range plan to it. And, and how it's going to work and how it's going to fit together. And, and maybe they can be done simultaneously, but I just, I, I, there's a lot of ifs here, but, and I think the, I think, again, I don't think we're too far off, Doug. I think we get something in writing, at least between the county and Yellow Jacket that we can put that group together and move it forward if there's project. It needs to be in writing. I, I just, before we put county dollars to it. And, and I, I don't want to switch. I just wanted to follow up on Jennifer's question. There's a couple of you yet that haven't answered the question. What's the, is there hesitation and what is it? So back to that question.
Okay. Well, I guess, uh, myself individually, I, I would say that I'm committed. I mean, if there's one thing that we could do as a board, it makes, I know I won't say legacy, but a, a huge impact on the valley. Be the, like Avery's large, but, and so I guess my question, I guess, with Scott, do we need to convene the, the board and, and talk about this? Make the, the formal commitment, give Kelly the letter and, and then we go forward?
Um, yeah, and Don, maybe you have other ideas, but I, you know, there's like a problem with funding things. As you all know, that one board can't commit another board to continue funding. I don't know if that's similar concept, but I, you know, I just, I, I don't want to diminish the, the idea though, that, you know, I was looking around the room and there's six people who aren't getting paid to be here today. And those six people are the Yellow Jacket District Board members. They're committed to this project. They want to be here. They took time out of their day to come talk to the commissioners to sort of advance this project that's been on the books or, uh, uh, in their, in their, in their heads and at our board meetings, um, for fifteen years. Uh, they've taken efforts to do other first steps in this feasibility project. Um, you know, the most recent being a, uh, checking on the, the high hazard dam status, you know, what, what kind of steps we need to take. They pushed a lot of effort into figuring out how much reservoir could be just various beginning, maybe steps. Put a lot of money up in the Yellow Jacket District into project feasibility and looking as, uh, Sean was talking about, you know, augmentation plan needs and demands and future water uses within the basin. Put a lot of effort into keeping these water rights alive over time, you know? So there, there is commitment to this project and to that. How we get to the next steps is going to be the challenge. And, um, they want to do this project. It's in the, it's in the mission and statement of, of a water conservancy district under state statute to build and, you know, provide water projects for those constituents. That's what the board does. That's what it is.
So.
I'm sure.
No. So it sounds to me, and I'm just going to throw this out next steps kind of situation. Because we just, I feel like are going in circles. Um, if we're going to put this board together that you're envisioning, will you reread the, who you envisioned to be on this board so that this board understands who all we, if the county was to fund this, would like to see on this board? So who do you envision being on that board? Because I, I think your question was well taken, asking your attorney, you know, what, where do we go from here? And, and I would, I would think that you guys would get together and have your conversation and decide, but I would like to see, I, I want to know again, who all are you wanting on this board?
Well, first of all, before I do that, I know that you guys are committed. Don't take that wrong. I am behind you a hundred percent. I know how boards work. I was on a board for several years. And I, and I know you're putting, uh, your time in there. So don't take that as negatively. I'm trying to help you along. I'm trying to help you. I'm not. But, uh, and, and Jennifer, I, I'm not stuck on these people that I suggested.
Okay.
I'm willing to work. I just want this group together because I think the group would have a lot more, uh, power politically and everything that is going to be needed in this project. No matter how far it goes.
Relevant to this, this new, uh, entity. I just wanted to throw out a little bit of caution. I think Scott's probably thinking about this. Is that we, uh, we have two conservancy districts within the base. Rio Blanco and Yellow Jacket. We do not sit on the Rio Blanco board. We don't have advisory decisions. Uh, we are a completely separate entity. We wish everybody the best because as, as Scott said, this state statute says our conservancy districts are here to ensure water security for our communities. But in the idea of this new, uh, entity, I think it's extremely important that those that are involved are specifically there for Yellow Jacket's project, not Rio Blanco, not anybody else's, but specifically Yellow Jacket. I, I, I would be concerned if there was members of this entity that were not specifically stakeholders within our, our district of the boundaries of Yellow Jacket. So I'm just saying that because, uh, I think a little bit of a hesitation for me at least is who's going to be on this board and what is their motive? Uh, so anyway.
I understand what you're saying, but you need to keep an open mind because it's just exactly what Mr. Smith said a minute ago. If this, if we don't have this, that's gone. So there are a lot of, of, uh, uh, I think it's for the, the county is what White River is. So, and I know what you're thinking, but I hope that you get that, that kind of stuff out of your head and, and let the county. We're all one group. Let's try and tackle this thing together.
So as Mr. Smith mentioned, water delivered in the river upstream goes all the way down through everybody.
Yeah.
Water released downstream does not. It doesn't help us.
Uh, what happens? I'm just going to throw this out there. What happens if, uh, California calls for more water?
Probably not. They're probably going to get it.
Yeah.
Because California and Texas, the river's tight.
Yeah, but if you had a reservoir down river that could satisfy some of that and you could keep using some of your water. I'm not a water guy. I'm just, I'm just throwing stuff out there that you, you guys, you can't. I, you can. I hope that you're not narrowing in on personal stuff and.
Well, what you're.
Well, what you're.
Be to ask the county to pay, you know, to put some money into this feasibility study. That's the request. Uh, and how much that is, and then how much the county will, you've got the proposal. Uh, that's the request. The next steps, I think, will be the next steps. But you're happy to work with Don, any sort of MOU and whatever that the county would like to see. Uh. But that's, that's the the critical point right now is, is the county willing to put some money into this?
We, we can't make any decisions today. Okay. So, so I think putting the MOU together, Vicky sending it to the three of us. And then us making that decision at that.
And you can take that to our board once that's done and have that prepared and and that would be a good thing to talk about and to have.
Right, so, so just to help things along when you meet with your board, I think you need to come up with your envision of it because just. Asking us for the money is probably not gonna work. I'm just speaking for myself now.
You've got a tight budget too, and I, to Callie's point on this degrusing deal. Uh. Council. We probably need to investigate that because I don't know, can we do it or can we not do it? Is it just a county vote to do it? That's a big question, so that's a battle.
You're over three counties, right?
That's right.
But you'd have to have the members of.
That's huge.
But I don't think it's, I mean, it's only.
Only the people.
Yeah, it's always that.
It's only those people.
Yes, we could, if we could degrudge and get some money in our budget. We'd like to throw a lot more money at it, but we can't do that. We're limited.
And if you're gonna grow, and I think that's part of it, is with twenty seven thousand dollars a year. You're going to be limited to what you can do as a, as Yellow Jacket District. So even though you have the statutory obligations to try to grow the water and to make, you know, better decisions for those. Uh, citizens within your, your district. You, you don't have any opportunity to do that.
But David, I'm sorry, Don, my vision is to make it broader than that. We get more people involved, more entities that have more resources than than you guys have, but that I think it's gonna take.
It'll take a huge amount of funding, yeah. Or if, and you guys already know, working at that other project, it's an awful amount of money. It, we, we got to figure out a way to make it work.
And and I applaud that, that is. We're all headed for the same direction. We just need to get there.
Okay. So you guys meet, you two get together. And then we'll go from there.
On the, on the group, I might, what do you, you guys' vision, setting that together? Do I need to, we, you know, we've got a, speaking as fair now. We've got a board meeting coming up next week. Is it okay if I approach our board, get feeling for them? What their envision of an augment group or, you know, an augmentation media or?
I think you're, I think you're getting ahead of us. Let's, let's figure out if we. Who the, who the members are and what we. What they want and then what we want, so don't get ahead.
So, so there's, there's two separate issues though, because regardless of what. Yellow Jacket, if they expand Avery or not, that's, that's one issue of an augmentation plan. We've got to come up with somebody that's gonna administer an augmentation plan for this county regardless.
Right, but if this doesn't work, we can talk about that then. Let's, let's keep this focused on this, this between Yellow Jacket and and the, the, getting the, the. Money put together and and the, the group, the group. We all, I, I just don't want to go down those rabbit holes.
And I don't want to go down rabbit holes either, but we just heard from the state that, you know, as of May first. Are you gonna subdivide more, more stuff? And I, I, now we're getting off, I was like, but this is, I've been asking for a meeting on this particular topic. That has to be addressed soon. And whether it's scheduling a workshop regardless of what Yellow Jacket is.
Well, we don't need two. We don't need two, so let's do one at a time and and see how this works out and. And uh, if it doesn't work out, then we'll, we'll back up and do option two, but let's, let's try to keep it. Down to one. We're having a hard nest time with one, okay?
Well, get you the one, one committee, one group that does, that can do it all. We can set up the committee as they're doing.
And I appreciate your enthusiasm and I, and I agree, yes.
Wouldn't it make sense to get the feasibility determination before you set up this committee? Because if you create this committee, you know, the code secretary is saying, have all this established, and learn it doesn't work. You didn't have to abolish it. Wouldn't it make sense to find out if this is possible? Or would you just go?
I have that, I, I stated that already that, that we could do that, but we want. To have some kind of an MOU or something that if it is feasible, this is our direction.
That's more definition on what we're, yes. Because. Currently, the Parks and Wildlife manages the reservoir. They've increased the opportunity of releases five years out of a ten year window. Is that correct, Scott? So that's been a big improvement. It used to be two years in a.
But that's only for fish. It's not for what we need it for.
That's fish.
Well, I've noticed that fish don't know the difference between augmentation and piscatorial releases. They're not in particular, that's for sure.
This is state does.
All right, I think we have our marching orders and we will. Um, be in touch with the board and we appreciate you guys, everybody coming out today and. And having this conversation with us, so.
Yeah, we're gonna, thank you, guys.
And let, and let's, let's not let this go. Let's try and stay after it. And and uh. Get something done.
Doug, if you see us out there with a bake sale.
Be sure you have lemonade, though. It's hot in the afternoon. There you go, that's how you raise money.
Just a reminder, uh, the round table is doing a field trip July ninth. And that's kind of a big deal. It's the first time they've come over the mountain. And they're going to, one of their items that they're gonna be looking at on the ninth. Is a uh, a physical, you know, inspection and a, a, a look at Lake Avery. So Lake Avery's definitely gonna be on the round, round table schedule. Uh, the, the general meeting for the round table starts at five o'clock at our house. Uh, the field trip will begin at nine o'clock. It's gonna be a big day, but I'm excited about Lake Avery getting to some attention from the round table.
Thank you.
You are making strides with the, you know, a bigger.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you guys for taking time out of your day to come in here.